I now call the meeting of the Hampton City School Board to order. Ms. Bowers, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Afonja?
Here.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Here.
Ms. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here. Let the record reflect that all board members are here. At this time, I will turn our meeting over to Tamea Kelly, our student rep to the board, for our opening.
Good evening, everyone. Tonight will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by the Senior Class President of Hampton High School, Janaya Martin. Will you please stand?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for being here, Janaya. Now, I understand you have something to share with all of us.
Yes, I do. I actually have a poem for you guys by Khalil Gabriel called "Fear." It is said that before entering the sea, a river trembles with fear. She looks back at the path she has traveled, from the peaks of the mountain, the long winding road crossing forests and villages, and in front of her, she sees an ocean so vast that to enter, there seems nothing more than to disappear forever. But there is no other way. The river cannot go back. Nobody can go back. To go back is impossible in existence. The river needs to take the risk of entering the ocean because only then will fear disappear, because that's not where the river will know. It's not about disappearing into the ocean, but of becoming the ocean.
Thank you so much for that wonderful message on fear. Now, I understand that it's your senior year, and school started last week. So how was that first week for you?
So, I did the request form, and I actually started school yesterday. But so far, it's been good. I got my schedule changed today, so today, first classes were actually really good.
That's wonderful. We're very glad to have you here. What would you say your goals are for senior year?
So, my goals are to execute a great senior year for everyone in my cohort. I plan to do my college applications, you know, HU. And honestly, just have fun. It's my last year, so I want to go out with a bang.
And who do you have with you supporting you tonight?
Today with me, I have my Crabber family over in the corner.
Thank you so much, Janaya. Have a wonderful night.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you so much, Janaya, for joining us. And I'm going to ask your Crabber family to stand for us also to be recognized. Ms. Paula, it is a true Crabber, true and true. I swear she owns every red dress they've ever made. Any comments from board members? Mr. Samuels?
You know, Dr. Mason, I have to say something since she brought up...
Listen, turn his mic off.
University. And although I'm an alumni of Norfolk State, I just want you to consider the Norfolk State University. Just consider. I know HU is a great school, and we are looking forward to the collaboration with President Wilson. But once again...
Williams.
President Williams, but once again, just consider Norfolk State.
All right, we're going to move right along. The Chair will now entertain a motion to adopt tonight's agenda.
Mr. Chair, move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Ms. Cherry. Any discussion? Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Afonja?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye. Motion carries. Next, I'd like to take a moment just to introduce. I see we have some special guests here with us tonight. I see Mayor Tuck is with us back there. Stand Mayor Tuck. We also have members of City Council with us tonight, and I'll ask you to stand as I call your name. We have Councilman Brown, Steve Brown. Councilwoman Farabee. Councilman Bowman. We also have City Manager Mary Bunting with us. And also, we have our Sheriff Karen Bowden. You always feel safe when the sheriff is around, so... In addition, we have some special guests with us tonight from Hampton University. We have the administrative team from Hampton University. So will everyone representing Hampton University tonight please stand to be recognized also? And at this time, it's my pleasure and privilege to call President Williams, the 13th President of Hampton University, to the podium to introduce himself to our community and to Hampton City Schools.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mason. And so, to the mayor and all of the members of the City Council, and certainly to you, Dr. Mason and Dr. Smith, I just want to say thank you all very much for allowing me just a few minutes to introduce myself to the Hampton Schools. So, my first official act, if you would allow me just a point of privilege, I was going to ask this beautiful young lady to stand and join me, right near the council. And I was just going to ask you to raise your right hand. Aye, your full name.
Aye, Janaya Martin.
Will be attending Hampton University.
Will be attending Hampton University.
Next year. So, as President of the university, I believe I have my very first recruit to Hampton University, and I can't wait to see her on our campus. And so, thank you. Let's give her a round of applause. And so, I'll just say very, very quickly, unfortunately, my lovely wife, Myra, the first lady, was unable to join me this evening. But she and I returned back to Hampton University and the Tidewater area to our home by the sea at Hampton University. We are delighted to be here. We look forward to a word that I heard in an earlier session, a wonderful collaboration with each and every one of you and with our schools. We can't think of a better place in the world to be and exactly the kind of people we want to share this next chapter of our lives with. At the end of the day, we look forward to the opportunity to impact the lives of our students. And I believe it's a wonderful relationship between Hampton University and Hampton School. So on behalf of the entire university and the wonderful staff and faculty, thank you, and we appreciate the very, very warm welcome, and we look forward to many more. Thank you.
And we do have a little something for you also, Mr. President. Thank you. All right. At this time, those that need to exit, we will allow you to go ahead and take this moment to go ahead and leave. Thank you. All right. Now, at this time, we want to move right into item number two on the agenda, and that's the swearing in of our student representatives. This year, we are fortunate to have four representatives. We had increased the number from two to four because, as a board, we decided that we wanted to make sure we had an opportunity to hear from students from different schools where possible. And so, we have four high schools represented...four high schools, should I say, and we wanted to make sure we had four students representing, you know, our school division for each of our high schools. And so, at this time, I will call our student representatives to the stage, Mohammed Al Saffar, Vicky Chen, Tamea Kelly, and Michaela Montgomery. All right. So it is truly my honor and pleasure to swear you in as student reps to the board, and I will ask you that you raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly affirm...
I do solemnly affirm...
...that I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
...and the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Virginia...
...and that I will faithfully...
And I will faithfully...
...and impartially discharge...
And impartially discharge...
...the duties incumbent upon me...
The duties incumbent upon me...
...the duties incumbent upon me... As a board, as a school board student representative...
As a school board student representative...
...according to the best of my ability...
According to the best of my ability...
Congratulations to each of you. And just for our viewing public, I want you to each introduce yourselves and just tell which school you represent and which academy, okay?
My name is Mohammed Al Saffar, and I go to the Hampton High School, where the legacy of excellence always continues, and I represent the IB Academy.
Hello, everyone. So my name's Vicky Chen, and I also attend the Hampton High School, and I'm also a senior in the International Baccalaureate Program.
Hello, everyone. I hope you've had a great evening so far. I'm so glad that I can be here to assist you guys in completing great things. My name is Michaela Montgomery. I'm a senior at Bethel High School, the home of academic excellence, and I look forward to just having a great year with you guys and achieving great things together.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tamea Kelly. I am a 12th grader at the Hampton High School, where a legacy of excellence continues, and tonight I represent the International Baccalaureate Academy.
Ms. Paula, they're all yours just about, huh? Congratulations to each of you. And so, next on the agenda, I think we're up to item number three, is recognitions, and I'm going to turn the mic over to Ms. Kelly Gore.
Well, good evening, Chair Mason, Vice Chair Cherry, School Board members, Superintendent Dr. Smith, and our HCS community. Before Ms. Afonja actually steps to the microphone to assist with tonight's recognition, I have a special presentation to share with you to welcome everyone back to a new school year. So our ultimate goal every year is to get students, staff, and families excited about the first day of school and the new year. And I'm going to be quite truthful that each year we ask ourselves, how are we going to top last year's opening? But we put our heads together, and we find a new way to create excitement around the start of the year. And this year, we wanted to create a message that this year is going to be bright, that as educators, we are part of that light that students need and thrive on. So we opened up our welcoming with a message from the superintendent, sharing that our momentum is strong as we continue to provide a high-quality education and prepare all of our students in grades pre-K through 12 to graduate the portrait of a Hampton graduate. In his message, he shared the Division's back-to-school video as well as a special message from our Chair, Dr. Mason. So what we're going to do at the moment is take just a few moments to view the two videos, our back-to-school, and then our special message from Dr. Mason.
And that's the way it's done in HCS.
So again, we are looking forward to a very bright future, and that our educators are that light for our students. And then on to Dr. Mason's welcome-back message.
Hello. I'm Dr. Richard Mason, Chair of the Hampton City School Board, and on behalf of the School Board members, I am pleased to welcome each of you, our teachers, staff, students, and families, to a new academic year. The focus of Hampton City Schools will continue to center around teaching and learning that challenges each of our students to know, learn, and do. In order for us to continue to be successful in our focus, we must join together with these things in mind. First, education is a partnership. Collectively, students, teachers, staff members, administrators, and our parents and guardians must all come together as one and communicate those things that are in the best interest of our students. Next, let's all challenge ourselves to grow in all areas, and that may sometimes include those areas that extend beyond our comfort level. But that's okay, because that will drive us to be the best that we can be. And finally, let's all take time to have some fun and be kind to one another along this academic journey. So, on behalf of the School Board, I would like to extend best wishes to everyone for a great school year, and thank you in advance for all that we are about to accomplish this academic year. I'm so excited to come together as one division, one community, one family to ensure we are meeting the needs of every child, every day, whatever it takes.
The presentation will be on Board Docs afterwards. But no, truly, he had a great message for students, staff, and parents alike, how, what the expectations are going into this year, and really how we are the one community. And I really think that that shows with, you know, our HU president being here, City Council, that we are one community in our collaboration to make sure that all of our students have a bright future.
Yes.
We also had the opportunity to have several, four to be exact, welcome-back messages that aired on Wavy TV 10, and that was part of their back-to-school morning announcements. And we took the opportunity to share that on our social media. So I wanted to give a very special thank you, and I had not planned on sharing these videos because I know that we only have so much time this evening, but they are there for our viewing audience to click on. But a very special thank you to Mr. Ralph Saunders, even though he said he was going to get me for putting him on TV. He's our executive principal at Bethel High School. He participated in Wavy's morning announcements and welcomed back everyone to Hampton City Schools. We also had Dr. Kara Plank, who is the principal of Albert W. Patrick III Elementary School. She gave greetings. That was aired on Wavy TV 10. And then we had a lot of fun because not only did our principals assist us, but we had Mr. Griffin from our Transportation Department welcoming back our students from the bus driver perspective and transportation. And then we had a really cool message from our food and nutrition service workers, and these are actually staff from around the city, even though it's taped at Phoenix, and they had a little welcome-back song at the end. So again, I had not planned on sharing these, but I put them there for the viewing audience to see. On the first day of school, we had staff in and out of all of our buildings. They were taking photos, little snippets. We had PEG TV. We also had Maurice Rogers, our photographer and graphics. And we did something a little bit different this year. I'm always trying to find different ways to reach our audience. We created Instagram reels, which are quite challenging, actually, from my perspective. Of course, you all are probably very good at it, our young people. But adding that music, putting graphics to it, they were laughing at me as I was editing like small little pieces of each video and putting them together. So we created several Instagram reels that we also shared on Facebook. Like I said, it was our first time creating it, but we had fun, a very fun time spotlighting HCS in a different way, and we had over 17,000 views on our reels. So that was exciting. And then I'm hoping we have sound at this point, because to wrap up this evening's presentation, here's a snapshot of our first day of school. ...school year goes, but also how quickly it goes when you see them in pre-K and then again in high school. So it's really nice that we've captured it. And I apologize that we didn't have sound, but I would like to say that the video, we will post that, like I said, on Board Docs. We also put a little snippet of it on the first day of school to share with our families and have planned on sharing that again tomorrow in a Throwback Thursday in case you missed it kind of piece. But I do want to recognize Andy Foley and their entire PEG TV staff for their work on all of our back-to-school videos, and Maurice Rogers for the great photographs that we captured on that first day. So at this time, I would like to ask Ms. Afonja to proceed to the microphone for tonight's recognition. Ms. Bowers, you can just minimize that because I believe Dr. Cagiano's presentation is on that same... Thank you very much. All right. So tonight, we do have one recognition. The National School Public Relations Association, which is also known as NSBRA, recognizes the leader in school communication, has honored the best work in school communication for more than 50 years. Each year, districts or organizations' school communication programs across the country have the opportunity to submit their best work for consideration in one of three of NSBRA's award programs. So at this time, I'd like to ask staff from our graphics department and PEG TV to please come forward and join me by the podium. They usually like to work behind the scenes. They're behind the camera, behind the computer. I can guarantee this makes them very nervous. Just join me right here. We're going to look up at the board as I kind of tout a little bit of what happened this summer, and then Ms. Afonja will join you, ask to join you on stage. So tonight, I have from our graphics department, we have Matt Howser, who leads the department. Vicky Carper is not able to be with us this evening, but I certainly want to still recognize her. Sharnina Carmona and Maurice Rogers. From our PEG TV, we have Andy Foley, who is actually back in the control room, probably sweating it out because we didn't have any music. So bless his heart, he's back there now. He is the director of PEG TV, as well as Renee Camden and Matt Buckwalter, I believe, are in the back helping Mr. Foley out with that sound. Krista Campbell is here with me, Steve Fryer, Wu Begabray, Jasmine Graham, and Amy Rose. They are all members of our PEG TV station. And since our meeting, like I said, is live, several of those members are in the back in the control room, manning the control room, and unable to join us out here up front. So these individuals are here tonight. They are at my request because they like to work behind the scenes. But I thought it was very important because we always recognize at school board meetings, regional, state, and national awards. And so they've got some exciting things to share. That's not why they're here. Are we good? Nope. Nope, we are echoing. All right. Can you all hear me if I kind of pull that away? Perfect. All right. This evening, they are here to recognize their hard work for Hampton City Schools as they received five Awards of Excellence, which is a national award. It's the highest recognition national award. One Award of Merit, and four honorable mentions from the National School Public Relations Association 2022 Publications and Digital Media Awards Program, which recognizes outstanding education publications, e-newsletters, digital media programs, radio, TV, video programs, social media, infographics, blogs, and websites. So I'm going to actually start with the four honorable mentions. The Hampton City Schools website received an honorable mention. It was redesigned by Vicky Carper and premiered on August 19, 2021. Next, HCS received an honorable mention for our Stop the Spread, Choose to Get Vaccinated Student Campaign, which encompassed several videos, digital flyers, social media posts, and graphic design. Also receiving an honorable mention was our Hampton City Schools Class of 2021 Academic Excellence Newspaper ad, which spotlighted our valedictorians, salutatorians, and our TNCC graduates, as well as our HCS Quality Customer Service logo. So those were just our honorable mentions. As I already said, the Division received one Award of Merit. This was for our budget at a glance, which you all are very familiar with during the budget process. We use that as part of our budget communication. Now on to the Award of Excellence, which again is the highest recognition at a national level. The Division was recognized for five pieces of work. Our individual school PR flyers that were created as part of our customer service initiative. A special thank you from the superintendent, which was our end-of-year video created to close out our 2021 school year. And if you've not seen that, you better grab some tissues because that is a, just really tugs at your heart. We also were recognized for our 2021 Inaugural Academies of Hampton graduation video, our first-ever HCS music video last year, which was our welcome back to our 2122 school year. And we were recognized nationally highest level for our Happy Holidays video, and I chuckle because we have got such a great superintendent who will do anything we ask. And that video was mirrored after National Lampoon's Christmas Vacation, where we locked Dr. Smith in an attic, and then he fell out at the end. So, yes, again, he, you know, he was our DJ in our music video. We locked him in an attic. He fell through the roof. We're very fortunate to have such a super great superintendent that lets us just keep pushing the envelope on our videos. But please join me in giving a round of applause to our graphics department and our PEG TV on all of these awards.
All right. So would you all please join me on the stage? Come on up. So many extraordinary things are happening behind the scenes. Before I present each department a certificate of recognition, I would like to share that our Hampton City Schools graphics department, PEG TV, and our print shop and records, under the direction of Marty Wood, work strategically to provide consistent and targeted messaging that not only tells Hampton's story, but builds strong relationships with all of our stakeholders. Being recognized by NSBRA and receiving 10 national awards validates the collaboration and hard work of these departments as they create content... and hard work of these departments as they create content that is cutting edge and innovative to school public relations. On behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, our Vice Chair, Ann Cherry, the Hampton School Board and Superintendent, Dr. Smith, it is an honor to present each department a certificate of recognition. And the certificate reads, "Certificate of Achievement for the Hampton from the Hampton City School Board. Congratulations! This certificate is proudly presented to PEG TV. National School Public Relations Association Award of Excellence. Publications and Digital Media Awards." And it is signed today, September 7th, 2022, by our Superintendent, Dr. Smith, and our Chair, Dr. Mason. That's the one for PEG TV. And the other one reads, "Certificate of Achievement from the Hampton City School Board. Congratulations! This certificate is proudly presented to the graphics department from the National School Public Relations Association Award of Excellence. Publications and Digital Media Awards." Also signed today, September the 7th, by our Superintendent, Dr. Smith, and our Chair, Dr. Mason.
And Ms. Afonja, I know that Mr. Foley's not here, but if you would please give the certificate to Mr. Fry right next to you, Mr. Steve, he will give that to them. And then if Matt Howser would step forward to take the certificate for graphics, because he is the graphics department.
All right, and graphics TV. All right, thank you so much. Before everyone returns to their seat, with any family members or any special guests or anyone with us tonight that are here in support of these fine people, please stand to be recognized.
Well, I'm not going to stand to be recognized, but woo-hoo!
Let's give these dynamic teams a round of applause again for all the fine work that you have done. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys. Yes, they'll probably get me tomorrow because they do not like coming and they like to be behind the camera and behind the computer. But Chair Mason, that does conclude tonight's recognition. Thank you.
All right, thank you, and congratulations to everyone. Any comments from board members? Ms. Cherry?
Yes, I'd just like to comment. Matt, tell them to come back here a minute. Thank you, Pumpkin. Listen, I have to say, and Ms. Bowers will chime right in, these are like, these are children, Ms. Bowers, because we have been with all of these people for so long in Hampton City Schools, whether it's Andy and his TV people, which, which was led by my Scotty Bowers earlier, Matt with his graphics people, Marty with Print Shop. I mean, these people are amazing. And one thing I want to say is, having been PR Director, I can tell you, and you can take the message back, Matt, NSBRA is a hard nut to crack. They are so competitive in NSBRA, because you're talking about departments from across the United States of America, and you're talking about different school divisions who have way more money than we have. So for them to have these kind of awards not only speaks volumes for them, I mean, this is who they are. And as Ms. Gore said, you won't see many people in the audience for them. They don't want to be in the audience. They are behind the scene people. But I want to end it by saying this, you cannot have this kind of success if it were not for good leadership. Ms. Gore, you are doing an amazing job with an amazing team, so my hat's off to you as well.
Anyone else? All right. Next item on the agenda is item number four, the consent agenda. 4.01 Personnel Report 22-16. 4.02 Minutes of the School Board Meeting of August 17th, 2022. 4.03 Certification of the Closed Session of August 17th, 2022. And 4.04 School Board Consent to Receipt of Donations, September 2022. What's the pleasure of the board?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second. It's been properly moved by Mr. Samuels and seconded by Dr. Woodhouse that we approve tonight's consent agenda. Any discussion? Ms. Bowers, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afonja?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carries. Next, Superintendent and Staff report. I'll turn it over to Dr. Smith.
Mr. Chair and Vice Chair and members of the School Board, it is my pleasure to, at this time, ask Ms. Robin Ruth, our Executive Director, for Human Resources to come forward. And she's going to introduce the Hampton University Teachers Symposium Partnership, in particular, the Dean that we're delighted to have with us and to demonstrate our ongoing partnership with Hampton University. And so, Ms. Robin Ruth, please.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Smith, and good evening. I am excited. There's been quite a bit of talk this evening about collaboration and partnerships between Hampton University, Hampton City Schools, and the City of Hampton. Thank you. Well, we, we got a jumpstart on that. And back in February or the March timeframe, Dr. Charbonne contacted me and introduced the idea of a teacher symposium to me. And she is going to share with you all of the wonderful things that went on this summer. It was an opportunity for our teachers to, to learn more about teaching and technology. And so, Dr. Charbonne, if you want to go ahead and come on up.
And she serves as the department chair, and we also have the dean with us from, please stand, Dean Malone Cologne. Please stand as we introduce you as well. Thank you.
Good evening, Superintendent Smith, Board Chair, Dr. Mason, distinguished board members, Dean Malone Cologne, and all of the guests we have tonight. I am so pleased to present to you what we did this summer with about 30 teachers from Hampton City Schools in a school symposium titled Technology in the Classroom: Enhancing Student Engagement. It was really great how we came about with the title. Our Chancellor and Provost, she was here earlier, Dr. Hayesberg, wanted us to support schools by sharing what we were doing with technology at the university level and how we could help enhance technology in the classroom. So we had a lot of fun with this. Let's go. Oh, we skipped a slide. Something's happening.
Yep.
Well, anyway, we'll just move forward. Keep going, maybe we'll see it. Planning, great, that's the slide I wanted to get to. We started off by reaching out to the school district because, as I told Dr. Hayesberg and the dean, we needed to get with the school district to find out what their needs were. Remember, we're dealing in a different environment now in education. We don't have teacher candidates coming to the school of education looking for a teaching degree. Our numbers are dwindling. So if we want to do something, if we want to make an impact in the schools, we have to reach out and work with the school districts. We had a lot of discussion about that, and we're talking now, how can we help school districts have more effective, impactful teachers in the classroom? That's what we're all about. So we got with Ms. Ruth. I can't see enough about her. She was welcoming, she was organized, she was coordinated, and she met with us and shared what Hampton City Schools would like for us to do. We started off with a four-day symposium. That's what Hampton University wanted to do. And Ms. Ruth said, well, it's the end of the year, that may not be the best thing. Let's start out with a two-day symposium so we can make sure we really keep the teachers engaged and they come. So that's what we did. We reached out and we got input on the topic relevance. We changed the topic as a result of our meeting, because initially we were talking about distance learning, but we ended up with this powerful impact on student engagement. We established our target audience of teachers. We met the timelines that we set for ourselves. We made sure that at the university, we took care of the logistics, the space concerns, and all of the other needs, parking on campus. All of the needs of the teachers were met when we engaged them. Safety first. We looked at our COVID protocols and make sure all of them were followed as the teachers came onto the campus, and we kept in touch with Ms. Ruth, our point of contact throughout the entire process. We had presentations. I won't go into the details of the presentations, but I was really pleased that our librarian, Ms. Tina Rollins, worked with teachers on all of the databases from VDOE in all of the content areas. This was shared with the teachers, and she showed them how to use these databases, how to work with them in the classroom environment. We also worked with Dr. Williams. She works with liberal studies. She's a professor in psychology, and she talked a lot with teachers about the emotional needs of the students after the pandemic and what teachers were going through as they came back in buildings and were working with our students to engage them with learning. Of course, you see some of the other presenters. I want to focus on Mr. James Richardson. He was the account executive from Apple that really provided some deep insights as to how teachers needed to be using Apple, giving them some tricks of the trade because you are an Apple district. And we did a lot of research on that before we came into this symposium so we can, we could make sure that we met the needs of all the teachers, and that was elementary, middle, and high school teachers who attended. And some of the other presenters, like Dr. Britton, who did a very hands-on lesson using technology and manipulatives in how to teach science. And the teachers were very impressed with that, and she's had a lot of contact and even additional emails in how that should be done moving forward. Our evaluation results, 95% of the teachers in attendance documented that the sessions were relevant. We had much discussion. In fact, at the end of the day, we talked a lot about how to engage students. We had back and forth conversations. We answered a lot of questions. We talked a lot about the issues that the teachers were facing, because we know that we speak teacher. We speak school. Even though we're at the university, we have practitioners who work with us in the Education Department. So we were able to engage, and our presenters were able to engage. The sessions were also meaningful and timely in some of the issues that we're dealing with in education right now, and how the technology should be used and sorting out the technology, because we have so many platforms and so many providers. So one of the things we spent time doing was educating our teachers on some of that so that when they are presented with what should we do, which platform is more effective, they now have some knowledge, at least the teachers who attended, in being able to speak with their leadership in talking about these issues. And we were also very engaging. All of our sessions were interactive, and not only did we have the teachers from the Hampton City Schools, we had a lot of our professors attend. So there was a lot of interaction in the room. And I am pleased to say that Ms. Cherry and Dr. Mason came out that morning, provided welcomes, talked with a lot of the teachers, and really created a sense of excitement the morning that you came and got us all started. So it was, it was really a great two days. We enjoyed it a lot. Please move forward. And we're looking now at future symposiums. The teachers are excited. We gained a little momentum because the second day, we actually had more teachers attend than the first day. So they got excited about what we were doing, and many of them are keeping in touch with us, and they're looking forward to attending future symposiums. We're looking at a January symposium, and we just got a professor from the state of Texas who's well-versed in trauma-informed teaching. He's written a book, so we're looking at some things in that, in that realm. And also looking at managing student behaviors, because we have a lot of provisionals and teachers who have not met all of the certification requirements. So managing students can be tough for that population. Our mission is to engage with the school districts and help those teachers do a better job each and every day. So that's a topic that we explored quite a bit. And then reading and writing, integrating throughout the curriculum. And of course, we know how important that is, and with the pandemic, we lost ground in some of these content areas. So these are all topics that we're looking at. We'll be talking with Ms. Ruth to see which topic we should explore and take a deeper dive and get ready for meeting the teachers hopefully in January and engaging in these topics with them. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you very much, Dr. Charbonne.
All right.
Any questions or comments from board members? Ms. Cherry?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, they say a rising tide lifts all boats. Dr. Charbonne, would you come back just for a second, please? And the fact that we have this relationship that is just taking off extremely well with Hampton University is, is an example of that. You all took not only your talents, but your coordination, and you put it with our teachers. And correct me if I'm wrong, the cost was no cost?
No cost to the school district.
And that, that is amazing to get that kind of input from people like Apple. But I've got to tell you, one thing I did recognize there was the enthusiasm came from you. I was telling Dr. Mason, I've never seen anybody on that level be that enthusiastic about providing a service for others. So you're a true testament to what it means to be a servant, and we appreciate that.
Thank you. We also gave certificates to every teacher, professional development certificates that they could use as they move toward staying certified with VDOE.
And free is always good for recertification.
Exactly, exactly. You've got Mr. Samuels over here saying, oh, man.
We did it, we did it free because we wanted to get grounded with the school district, and we wanted to reach out to you with that olive branch to show you the capabilities, because we, we realize, you know, Hampton University, we've been doing a lot of things with higher education and, and providing courses and academics, but there are many sides to what the Education Department can be doing in terms of working with school districts. And of course, that's what our accreditation bodies want to see, those true partnerships like we're doing now with you in the school districts, working to have those quality teachers, those highly effective quality teachers in every classroom. And that's what we want to help you do.
Well, we appreciate the fact that, that you not only see that, but you're working toward making sure that it happens in Hampton City Schools. Thank you for your partnership.
And with the support of my dean.
Always, always. I think you called her name about three times when we were there.
Chairman Mason, I say something. As, as Ms. Cherry was speaking, and I, I thought just came to mind, this is a win-win situation, position that Hampton City Schools and the university now in collaboration and partnership, because this is going to be a great recruitment tool for Robin Ruth and the division, because we will have firsthand experience, and I would say firsthand dibs on those graduating seniors that are future teachers coming to Hampton City Schools. And hopefully, students will also have the opportunity to, to, to do their teaching internship with Hampton City Schools. So it's a win-win for the university and the school division, Dr. Smith.
Absolutely, it is.
We're already talking about apprenticeships and other ways we can engage with you. We're also looking at recruitment, and I had the opportunity to talk with someone from your high schools to look at recruiting the high school students as future from your high schools to look at recruiting the high school students as future teachers. I'm very excited about that. So we're going to increase our highly qualified teacher population in Hampton Roads.
Awesome. Thank you. Other board members? Anyone else? Dr. Smith?
Outstanding. Thank you so very much for the presentation as well. And Dean, thank you for being present as well. We're grateful for this partnership and we look forward to the journey ahead. Thank you so much. We'll continue at this time with One Division, One Transformation, Standards of Accreditation and School Accountability and Accreditation Updates. I will ask that Dr. Cagiano, our Deputy Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction Assessment, will come forward along with Dr. Raymond Haynes, our Chief of Secondary Schools, to present some wonderful information regarding Hampton City Schools.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Good evening, Chair Mason, Vice Chair Cherry, members of the board. This evening, the purpose of our presentation is to share with the board and the viewing community some updates regarding school accountability measures as well as accreditation and the status of all 29 schools in Hampton City Schools. So looking at the agenda, I'll begin the presentation talking a little bit about standards of learning pass rates from the 2021, 2022 school year. And then I'll share some preliminary data. That, that data will be released by the Virginia Department of Education on September 22nd regarding school accreditation status. And then I'll be followed by Dr. Haynes, who will come forward to share some, really a teaser in reference to on-time graduation rates and dropout rates. This is also preliminary data. This will be released by the Department of Education on September 29th. And so I know Dr. Haynes will be coming back for, before the board in October to give a more detailed presentation.
And as Dr. Cagiano is going to the next slide, I want to say that this is anchored in our core business of teaching and learning, the focus of that, student achievement and success. So it's all anchored in student achievement and success.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. So taking a look at these standards of learning pass rates, you've got a two-year comparison here in front of you. So the 2020, 2021 school year compared to our results last year. As Dr. Charbonneau mentioned, we're still recovering, right, from the pandemic and some learning loss and some gaps to close. This is just highlighting that we are trending in the right direction. And so you can see from the two years ago to there, we are in each area up, whether 2% to 10%. A couple of assessments were not given due to COVID back in 2020, 2021. Those assessments have since been, again, back on the table for school divisions throughout Virginia. Our, our marketing department came out with a press release in reference to more detailed information on last year's SOL pass rates. And for the viewing audience, we have that link down below. Just to provide a little more context on the next several slides in reference to these pass rates, this was also in the press release. This is a table that depicts our performance last year at the end of last school year to neighboring divisions with similar student demographics. And as indicated here, Hampton City Schools outperformed neighboring school divisions in the region for those divisions, again, who serve students of similar demographics. What you're going to find throughout this presentation, Dr. Smith has shared this with the board before, we were well-positioned as a school division due to the systems that were in place, whether that be the ongoing meetings our chiefs of leader, the school leadership have had with principals, whether that's the guaranteed viable curriculum, the professional development we've been delivering, that put us in, in a position to rebound, if you will, and you'll see that on the next couple of slides. So the next slide really takes, again, a deeper dive. And so what this is, just a Cliff Notes version of the text up top, if you wanted to see where we were pre-pandemic, at the end of that 2018, 19 school year, you simply add the two numbers in each cell. So for example, reading in Hampton at the end of the 18, 19 school year, 71 plus 3 gets you a 74, and that's where we were. And so you can see that, that learning loss that has occurred because of the pandemic. So we are behind in each area as to where we were. However, again, to put things into perspective, to put things in context, when you look at the neighboring divisions, again, we are doing an outstanding job of closing that gap. To be where we are, even at science, at 15 points behind where we were at the end of the 18, 19 school year, again, looking at some of the scores from the neighboring divisions. And again, without those systems in place, we, we would not be rebounding as quickly as we are. To take another look, again, to keep putting it in context, the next two slides, this one represents mathematics, the following one, reading. The state, when they analyze data, they also analyze it at a student group level. And so what this slide depicts here, that column on the far right where you see all the green, on the right side of the screen is HCS student performance for various student groups, and then on the left side, you've got the state performance. And so there, there are nine student groups, but in this case, there are eight that were tested or represented at the, the last two testing years. And this, this graph here will show that in all eight of these student groups that in mathematics, Hampton City School students outperformed the state. So regardless of the student group, including the all-students group, our overall average for the pass rate for mathematics at the end of last year was higher than the state average. And then again, you compare that back to the 18, 19 school year. And so again, going back to what I shared earlier, the ability of our teachers and school leaders to respond, working with families and students stepping up to the plate certainly, closing that gap, we believe at a much faster pace than on average when looking throughout the Commonwealth. As you can see, in 18, 19, we were four out of eight indicators in math for student groups where we were exceeding state averages. Looking at reading, a similar story, we gained ground in one student group here, and again, five out of eight where we exceeded the state average in reading. One thing I would like to highlight on this slide would be the performance of this student group of students with disabilities. And so if you look on the left side, the state performance at the end of the 18, 19 school year for the student group was 47% across the state, passed this particular assessment. Hampton had a pass rate of 39 at the time, a difference of eight percentage points. Last year, throughout the state, students with disabilities reading, 43% pass year, pass rate. For Hampton, it was 40, so we narrowed that gap by five percentage points. But I think what's, what's very telling is that our students with disabilities reading actually outperformed the student group the year before the pandemic. And so a lot of heavy lifting on the part of our special educators in there. So again, another celebration that we saw when combing through the data. So I'm, I'm pleased to share, moving on to the second portion of this presentation, looking at the accreditation detail report and the status of our schools, that all 29 schools in Hampton are accredited. Again, this is preliminary data. All, all 29 schools in Hampton are accredited. So in the second phase of this presentation, what I'm going to do is kind of walk through and provide an overview of some information of how those accreditation ratings fall out from the state. The board is well aware of this statement here on the screen, and this is really more for the viewing audience, that the accreditation system. So the other school quality indicators, the next two you move to deal with achievement gaps, and these are student groups. And, and the business rule here is all of these groups come together to fold or to, to derive at one overall rating. And so each school, you look at, the business rules associated with this would be that no more, for example, than one student group at level two earns you a level one status. So each, each individual student group is held accountable for those same high benchmarks that the state has set, and again, you derive at one rating for a school. So when you look at the, our schools and the focus on achievement gaps, and we've been doing this work for a number of years, it is about all students, that again, all schools in, in level one or level two status for these two indicators. So achievement gaps in English, achievement gaps in math. And that means that at a, at a minimum, they would have only had at one level three group or no level three groups for all of those different student groups. So again, another cause for celebration. And then we get into some of these academic indicators, or really non-academic indicators, these student engagement indicators, and these are the remaining four. The asterisk there, again, by the CCCRI, which I mentioned earlier, that will be assessed at the end of the school year. And so here, I won't go into the depth, but again, for the viewing audience, you have kind of the rubric there in reference to those business rules. And so for student engagement, a lot of celebration in our high schools, and Dr. Haynes will share more about that. But again, four out of four, level one for graduation completion index as well as dropout rate. And then we haven't seen the state data yet. We're looking forward to absenteeism data being released on September 29th because we would put our students, our students' attendance up against anybody. The fact, again, with a number of students having to quarantine, coming down with COVID, the fact that we have no schools in a level three status from a chronic absenteeism standpoint is something to celebrate, and a lot of hard work from administrators and counselors, working with teachers, and just really staying on top of, of attendance and monitoring that on a monthly basis. So moving to accreditation ratings, I mentioned that we had 29 schools accredited. And so here's, you see, you see a breakdown. So 26 schools accredited without conditions, three schools accredited with, with conditions, and no schools accreditation denied. So no schools accreditation denied, and no schools accreditation withheld. So again, for the viewing public, these are the four different ratings a school could receive on the, on the front page of that report card. And so when we look at the three schools that were, are credited with conditions, there are three elementary schools, and it is because of one indicator. And, and as you'll see on another slide, they've met five of the six indicators, and in some cases overwhelmingly in green, as you can see here, meeting the highest benchmarks. And it was science that, that wound up for a level three status for these schools. So Basset Elementary, Machen Elementary, and Christian Elementary. These schools have already been digging into the, into the, the data, student by student data, looking at questions. And as a division, we have spent a lot of time this summer game planning how we support not only these schools, but looking at grade five science. And so we've done things such as revised curriculum, we've revised assessments, a lot of different PD has already taken place and is planned. One of the things we do, and maybe the board does not know this, at the end of each school year, when students qualify for expedited retakes, we, we send some of our teachers throughout the division to provide additional support. And so if you have teachers, for example, in grade five science at some schools who students demonstrated a 90, 85, 88% pass rates, we would ask them to go partner with teachers in other schools to support the remediation efforts. A lot of those teachers we brought in in grade five science this summer for her focus groups and said, are there resources we're missing, things you would like to see enhanced in the curriculum? Would you like to join us to deliver some optional PDs? And so we'll have ongoing, for example, optional Zoom sessions, some mandatory, and just a, a number of things from an action planning standpoint to, to address grade five science. So these are, these are the three schools that we'll be working closely with. So again, looking at the overall picture, 100% of schools accredited, and you see how it falls as far as the outline of rating there. And as I mentioned earlier, those schools that, that were accredited with conditions met five of the six indicators. And then you see the breakdown there by, by level and to include our, our pre-K through eights. I wanted to recognize at this time, Ms. Linda Dietz, Ms. Linda Dietz, she is our... Pardon? Yes, she has a new title this year. I was, thank you, Dr. Smith. She is our Director of Accountability and Data Support. And so Linda is the brains behind our operation when it comes to data disaggregation. And so six years ago, we did work and develop a web-based data system, and, and Linda has it dialed in. So we, we wanted to share with the community that we're able, in many cases, to forecast how schools are trending. I mentioned monitoring on a monthly basis attendance. She provides that data to principals, principals use that data to meet with counselors, counselors use that data to meet with families, and to address where we see a, perhaps a potential for chronic absenteeism before it comes to that point. And so again, systems in place to monitor a lot of the, the school quality indicators. And again, she'll be joining Dr. Haynes and I for the meeting coming up with high school principals. And we now have over 260 staff in the division who access her work on a regular basis, and you can see some of what, what that system yields from, again, from a database decision-making standpoint. That concludes this portion of the presentation at this time. I'd like to ask Dr. Haynes to come forward and to share some good news in reference to on-time graduation rate as well as dropout rate. Dr. Haynes?
Thank you, Dr. Cagiano, Dr. Mason, Vice Chair Cherry, members of the board, Dr. Smith and the Hampton community. As Dr. Cagiano mentioned, we know this, this is preliminary data, and we have more to come next month to further break down the information as it relates to our young people graduating on time. Our on-time graduation rates at this point reveal, first look at the dropout rates. As you can see, the dropout rates steadily declined since 2015 up until the current year of 2022. With the work that was originally led by Dr. Donna Woods and coupled with Dr. Smith coming in with his vision of the guaranteed enviable curriculum, making certain we had a laser-focused approach in the work that we did to ensure that we indeed left no child behind. Dr. Smith is, has been instrumental in providing us with the resources and abilities to make certain that we provide every opportunity possible to get our young people across the stage, graduating the portrait of a Hampton City Schools graduate. As you can see, the data reflects a steady decline in the dropout rates with 2020 being 1.2%, 2021 being .34. There was a slight increase of .62 for 2022. But it should be recognized or acknowledged that it's about 1,400 students in both cohorts of 21 and 22, with the dropout numbers still being in the single digits. We still focused on that portrait of a Hampton graduate with content knowledge, career and life skills, communication, collaboration, and leadership, and positive sense of self and purpose in terms of getting our young people and our commitment and promise to the community as well. We'll be pleased to know that the work of the graduation specialists at Phoebus High School, Dr. Nicole Boston Blanchard, Bethel High School, Ms. Lynette Hextall, Kikatane High School, Ms. Kakita Davis, and Hampton, the Hampton High School, Mr. Melvin Brown, along with the executive and academy principals, and Ms. Amber Brown, our Director of Secondary Schools, and the wonderful work of Linda Dietz. That team is second to none in the work that they do. There are so many data points that they look at on a regular basis to make certain we identify risk factors with young people who may be off track and putting together resources and interventions to get them back on track. But you will be pleased to know, since 2020, But you will be pleased to know, since 2015, we continued to build from places of strength to recognize that last year, in the first or the inaugural class of the wall-to-wall academies, we benefited from the highest graduation rates of 96.86%. And the second year of the wall-to-wall academies, we have experienced yet again the highest graduation rate of all time at 97.64%. Kudos to all the folks who do this work day in and day out. The stories that you will hear are just amazing. Two of my favorite times of the year are always the June graduations, of course, but the most powerful and impactful one often comes in August, because you hear the stories of the resilience and perseverance and tenacity that takes place with each of those young people. And the ability to actually see it through is just very powerful and impactful. We do look forward to coming back next month to further break down the data as it relates to the subgroups and how we fare in comparison to our surrounding cities and school districts. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Mason. That concludes this presentation. Dr. Haynes and I would be happy to address any questions that the board may have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from board members, comments? Ms. Banks Gray?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, appreciate it. Thank you, Dr. Caggianno and Dr. Haynes. It was an amazing presentation. I would like to get just a little clarity on the pass rate as far as the SOL test taking. Is it correct that we had over, was it 9,500 SOL?
That's correct. It does vary by assessment, but for example, yes, for the reading assessment, there were a little over 9,500 students taken. That's correct.
Real good. And then also, I'm curious to find out how many actually opted out of the SOL testing? And that actually, how does that play into the factoring of the numbers of the testers when it comes to that grand total? Can you give us a little more clarity on that?
Yes, ma'am. Good question. Yes, parents in the state of Virginia do have the right to opt out of SOL testing. And so for us, sometimes when we look at the data, that varies by test. For example, it goes anywhere from .6% for the writing test up to 1.3% for the reading test. So to put that in perspective, that the 9,400 students you mentioned, approximately 120 students were opted out of that particular assessment. So again, very small fraction. You know, in some divisions, that number is much larger, and really, the relationships our teachers have with our students, our principals have with our students, and we have a very large percentage of students who test. There's an expectation on the part of the federal government and the state that at least 95% of our students test, but we're typically somewhere around 97 to 98%.
Real good. And it's ironic that you are presenting this, because about a month or two ago, I was reading a report from CBS, and it stated that due to the pandemic, it would take our students a recovery time of years to get caught up based on the pandemic. And just to see these numbers and the data is very refreshing, because when I read that particular report, I was very alarmed, and I just didn't know what we would face at Hampton City Schools. So to see these rates, and the data does not lie. So I appreciate all the work that, Dr. Smith, your team, and Dr. Caggianno, and Dr. Haynes, that you put into effect and making very intentional moves to keep these trends in the positive and the amazing efforts that we see in this school district. I'm just, I'm really, really excited to see these, the data and the efforts that are being put into place. I do appreciate it so much.
Well, we appreciate that feedback as well as the board's continued support.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much.
Other board members? Ms. Cherry? Which way?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to thank Dr. Caggianno and Dr. Haynes. Excellent report. You know, what jumps off the screen at me is a very complex problem that takes a lot of effort to address. So at the building level, obviously, want to extend my thanks to all of the hard work that the staff and the teachers did, but I know that they got a lot of support at the division level. Critical that we were in a good position when the pandemic started from a technology standpoint, from a curriculum standpoint. But the systems approach, the ability to collect the data and address issues as they arrived, I know that those accreditations, without that data, wouldn't have been the same. It allowed you to strategically apply resources to ensure that we are where we are. And, you know, across the country, there was educational loss, but as your presentation showed, the entire division stepped up, including the students, to not let that be as big a deficit as it potentially could have been. So thank you to both of you and to all the employees of Hampton City Schools and the students.
We appreciate that feedback. Thank you, Mr. Kilgore.
I'm sorry, I would be remiss if I didn't mention Dana Kurtz at the Alternative Learning Center, too. She's also one of our graduation specialists. The work that they do there coincides with the work that they do at the four high schools. I certainly want to acknowledge her work, too.
Ms. Cherry?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, to piggyback on what Ms. Banks Gray said, there was an outstanding report. And partly because of all the hard work that went into getting us where we are right now. Dr. Haynes, I can't thank you enough for delivering that good news, where we had an on-time graduation rate of 87.96 in 2015, and here in 2022, during not only a pandemic, but lots of things were happening to families. People were becoming unhinged in ways we do not even know. Mental health issues were on the rise for both adults and students, for teachers, for parents, for educators across the spectrum. And for us to come out with a 97.64 in 2022 speaks volumes. It really does. As Mr. Kilgore said, the data does not lie. You know, we have been able to, each month, each board meeting, actually, we've been able to hear just outstanding academic reports from our staff. And I was glad to see that we had a slide up there that was called Student Achievement Game Plan, because for me, that's what I liken it to. Every board meeting, when you and your staff, Dr. Smith, come forward and give us reports on where we are academically as a division, I look at that as, for instance, an NFL game. And it all leads up, each time you all come before us, that's another NFL game, leading to what? The Academic Super Bowl. And when you look at the numbers, Dr. Caggianno, that you just gave us about our schools, every one of them, being accredited this year, that is the Academic Super Bowl. And we could not be there had we not been doing all these academic pieces along the way that you all have kept us informed of at each board meeting. So I want to first thank you for that. You know, my grandmother used to sing an old hymn called "No Not One." And when I look at this, and I talk about how many of our schools were denied accreditation, I think about her song, because it's "No Not One." And I just want to say again just how powerful this information is, but as Mr. Kilgore said, it takes everybody to get this done. We have, in my opinion, teachers who are second to none, who can inspire our students, who work hand in hand with our parents, and who buy into what's coming down from the administration. That in itself is a blessing because of that strategic focus that we have throughout the division. So with that said, I just want to say, I could not be prouder. I do have one question, because sometimes I was getting so excited, I wasn't listening that well. Okay, so I just got one question here. And by the way, and I know he doesn't mind me saying it, our congressman, Bobby Scott, was so pleased with these reports that had come out, even though they're not official, those unofficial reports, he was so pleased, and he let the superintendent of schools, Dr. Jeffrey Smith, he let me know and anybody else he could talk to on how proud he was to have Hampton City Schools in his district. Did he not, Dr. Smith? He really, really was. So my question I have is this one, and this is for Dr. Caggianno. Okay, when we look at our SOL pass rates, kind of what Ms. Banks Gray kind of alluded to earlier, are students with disability scores, are their scores included in the assessment data?
Yes, those scores are included in the assessment data. So for example, when we began the presentation with the pass rates, students with disabilities typically take an SOL assessment or an alternative assessment. Sometimes you've heard us use that acronym, the VAP, Virginia Alternative Assessment Program. Both of those scores factor into our SOL pass rates as well as school accreditation rates. And again, as I mentioned earlier, we have a very high percentage. In some divisions, you'll have a large opt-out, as Ms. Gray mentioned, in reference to students with disabilities. In our division, the numbers are typically 95 to 98% of our students are taking assessments, depending on the assessment. So again, a very large percentage of students with disabilities tested.
That's amazing.
So again, it represents roughly 13% of our student population overall for students with disabilities. But yes, those scores are included, both in the pass rates and the school accreditation.
That's good to know. I thought they were, but I needed that clarification as well. And I just have to say kudos to our students. They stepped up to the plate. Anybody who is a citizen of Hampton, who is not pleased that they live in a division that can post these kind of scores, just don't want to be happy. I tell you, I just am so excited. Thank you so much.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
All right. Mr. Samuels?
Yeah, Ms. Cherry alluded to it earlier when we talk about our student with disability and just looking at the data. And we are a driven data division. And you look at the data from 2018, 19, at the state level, 47. Ours were 39, 2021, 22, 43. So they had a decrease of 4%, whereas we only had, we went up by 1%. That is impressive, man. This is some impressive data, and I can't wait, you know, Dr. Smith knows me. I'm going to go home tonight, I'm going to pull up the video, and I'm going to dig a little bit deeper, and then I'm going to be calling Dr. Caggianno sometime this week or next week and say, hey, can you talk me through this? Because I want to know, how were we able to increase this number during a pandemic? This is, and when we talk about every child, every day, whatever it takes, from my opinion, every child in Hampton City School matters. And we're working to ensure that we capture all of this. So great job, Dr. Caggianno, and I wish Ms. Judge was here, so she can, hopefully, at the next presentation, Dr. Smith, Ms. Judge can come and talk to us about what does it look like from her lenses? What are some of the things that she's doing from, in that department to make sure that we have gains? Yeah.
I know she's watching. She's always watching.
Yes. Please tell her that I would like to see her at the next board meeting. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Judge. Any other comments from board members? Mr. Fong?
I just wanted to piggyback on what Mr. Samuel said about our young people with disabilities and how they did so remarkably well after coming back from a pandemic. I discussed it some yesterday when I was looking at this presentation prior to the meeting, and I really was concerned that that was not going to be the case. And to see that it was, that my concerns were not validated and that in this instance was very refreshing. And I 100% take my hats off to the instructors and the leadership, the students, but everyone had to be working together to see that this came to fruition and that the gap for our young people is not as significant as what it could have been and what it is in many other divisions. And so that I'm very excited about, especially when I look at neighboring divisions, to see how well we are faring, so far above where we see other divisions coming in at. It just speaks a lot to our division leadership, but also to those very, very hard-working folk in our buildings every day, who are making sure that, you know, whatever they need to do, that they're doing that, so that we can see this type of success. So thank you to all of you. I'm very, very proud, very proud to see these numbers, my own children. A child now goes to Hampton City School, so I'm interested, you know, very interested, not just from a board member's standpoint, but I want to ensure that she and all children are getting the level of education that's consistent with our standards of excellence here, and I believe that is certainly what is going on. Thank you.
Dr. Woodhouse?
I don't want to be left out. Thank you so much, Dr. Caggianno and Dr. Hayes, for this great report on the overall performance of our school system, and the hard work of our teachers and our students. One of the things that I would like to share was that I asked that question concerning these special needs and the students with abilities, with disabilities on yesterday. And so it's great to see that all of us are on the same page, in the same sheet of music, that we're concerned about our students with disabilities. One of the things that really is exciting for me is that how we have kept our 100% accreditation, even though there are three schools with conditions. Yet, we were worried about this pandemic being more dramatic on the school system accreditation than, and it proves that we are doing the right thing in Hampton. One of the things a lot of people don't realize is that accreditation is so important because it increases the, it's about the economical growth for our city. It's about the increase in college scholarships that's offered by the federal government to our students. It's about the colleges that are offering scholarships to our students, and it's about more highly qualified teachers that apply here in Hampton for jobs. And so all of this comes into play along with the federal and state funds that comes because of the 100% accreditation. So I must say that you have done an outstanding job. Like Ms. Cherry, I'll piggyback on what Ms. Cherry said, that any citizen of Hampton should be proud of what our school system is doing. And so I am a citizen of Hampton that is proud of what our school system is doing. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Dr. Woodhouse.
And I'll say, it's just where great partnerships and collaboration come into play with our citizens, our business community, the city, the university. We all come together, and we support our schools. And definitely, when it comes to our staff and our teachers, our administration showing up every day for our students, and that's where true teaching and learning takes place. So certainly, kudos to everyone within the Hampton City Schools, because it really takes an entire community to come together. So that one division, one transformation, one community, I like to say, one family, because we are all in this together. You know, this is what really, we can see the fruits of our labors when we work together and make things happen. So thank you all.
Absolutely.
Dr. Mason? Yes, sir. May I say something once again? I'm not belaboring this, but I just want to speak from a parent perspective, being that my son, who is in the seventh grade this year, but last year, he was in the fifth grade. And is Dr. Barrow here? Is she still here? Because she's over the elementary level. And although we experienced the pandemic and so forth, and, you know, we didn't have in-person learning, one other thing that I am pleased to say that my son performed so well on his SOLs.
And he was afraid to take?
And he was afraid, yeah. James was very, I wouldn't say afraid, but very anxious in taking the SOL class tests. And he performed so well. So, Dr. Barrow, you know, this is a credit to you and your staff at Hunter B. Andrews, and I just want to acknowledge, and I'm speaking as a parent, that my son, who goes to Hunter B. Andrews, we have a dynamic and outstanding staff there, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
I wanted to speak to Dr. Woodhouse's point, because he made a very good point when we talk about accreditation, especially from the student perspective. When you reference like the different scholarships that students and every, you know, that people who attend the Hampton City Schools get, it really can be very inspiring. And last year alone, we had so many students who got into these wonderful higher, like higher institutions. We had friends who I've like grown up with go to places like Johns Hopkins, Stanford, Northwestern, and it gives us hope, and we feel a lot more confident taking those leaps and applying to places like that, knowing that we can get in because we have the resources that we need right here.
Thank you, yes. That's what it's all about. Dr. Smith?
Mr. Chairman and Vice Chair, thank you so very much. I don't think anything else for me to say.
for me to say. Outstanding presentation. Then, I can answer one question raised in terms of what Mr. Samuels asked, you know, as he continues to look and examine the data at the Virginia Department of Education. But one of the things, we have launched a conceptual framework in terms of what we expect. Number one, that we have a systems approach. That is so important. And we articulate that on a regular basis, that it's important to have a systems approach whereby we understand the roadmap and the current reality, and that we're examining the appropriate data points. The second is a guaranteed viable curriculum. I would take our curriculum in Hampton City Schools and really place it up against any school division of the Commonwealth of Virginia. As a matter of fact, we have a number of school divisions that subscribe to our curriculum, along with our assessments that we provide, because they believe in the curriculum. They know that teachers spent time developing the curriculum with leadership and so forth, and that at the end of the day, they're gauging what young people should know, understand, and be able to do. The next is lesson design and delivery, to ensure that we're focusing on explicit instruction and not implicit instruction in our delivery, and that we have embedded within that the appropriate resources and strategies within the curriculum. So teachers don't have to go all over the place to find those strategies. We have them embedded in the curriculum and other resources. But using authentic assessments to gauge the success of delivering the curriculum, to start with asking ourselves the question whether or not young people mastered what we expected them to know, understand, and be able to do, using authentic assessments. And if you have your curriculum at one place and you're assessing at another level, there's a mismatch there. And so, we have an alignment there. But also focusing on the climate and the culture, to ensure that we have the appropriate resources to support young people and the adults around the climate and the culture. That's important, because at the end of the day, you can have a wonderful curriculum in place, lesson design and delivery in place. But then you have to ask yourself the question whether or not the classroom is conducive to the delivery of that. And then, data whereby we're analyzing the appropriate data, and we're getting reports from Ms. Dietz and others, but certainly from her department, to analyze the appropriate data points. And then, to make decisions based upon that student achievement data. It's not a guessing game. It's a science.
Correct.
And our core business is teaching and learning. We may not be good at anything else, but the one thing that we should know that we really have in place and that we're good at doing, and that is our core business of teaching and learning. Not making everybody happy, but focusing on teaching and learning, our core business, and the outcomes around student achievement and success, and keeping an eye on that. And then finally, twenty-first century tools. Not allowing the twenty-first century tools to drive us, but allowing the twenty-first century tools to support, and to use the twenty-first century tools as a vehicle to support and preparing young people. So really, when we think of the strategic plan, the board, you provided us with a comprehensive plan. And then, for us, it was to take that comprehensive plan, come up with a conceptual framework of leadership that really is aligned with the strategic plan. Without a board in terms of governance, around a strategic plan that's solid, solid, it's difficult for us to do the work that needs to be done, because we're focusing on too many other things. But the strategic plan points us in the right direction, provides us that framework, and then we use that as a means of a conceptual framework to align our day-to-day focus. Every day we show up, we know our mission, and we have to bring to life our mission around our core business of teaching and learning, focusing on not just the numbers, because we can quote numbers to you all day long, and you know that. But behind every number, we have students, the faces and names of students. And you just heard that from the student representative. In the class of two thousand twenty-one, I think we had twenty-six young people who earned an associate degree. Of the twenty-six, eleven of them were offered a full scholarship at the College of William &amp; Mary. That was from the class of two thousand twenty. That's just an indication of the great work occurring in our classrooms, with our classroom teachers, our building administrators, our support staff, and the work of this board in terms of your engagement around governance and the leadership team of Hampton City Schools. So I am proud to say that we have an awesome team around our core business of teaching and learning at every level. Transportation, school nutritional services, custodial services, maintenance, you name it. It's all of us coming together, our classroom teachers and support staff, to make great things happen in Hampton City Schools. And so, thank you so very much for the opportunity to make those remarks as a part of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
I normally don't have very much to say. I say it normally during the week, right? Dr. Haynes says, I wonder what would happen to you if you just couldn't talk.
All right. So next up, staff.
Staff report, staffing update. Again, you heard from Dr. Chabane.
Yes.
Her partnership with Ms. Ruth. And I really want to acknowledge the hard work, and I know that you will as a board, also around the fact of the efforts put forth around teacher recruitment and retention, a lot of late-night hours spent. But Ms. Ruth, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you, sir. Yes. We, in the spirit of the positive trends, as I shared with you back before school started, a couple of weeks ago, we still had eighty-plus teacher vacancies. We are now at seventy-four. So, not where we want to be, but we are trending in the right direction. I figure at this rate, by spring break, I should be fully staffed. And as I have said, that is my goal. At some point this year, we will be fully staffed. It may take me until April, but
We're not where we want to be, but we're not where we
Not where we're going to be.
That's right.
We are, we are, we are going to head towards a hundred percent staffed. So, we're not letting things get in our way. And I do have to say thank you to, I do have a fabulous team in HR, who have been finding all sorts of innovative spots to find new teachers, but also to our administrators, who have been really out there interviewing. They have also stepped up their recruiting efforts. I know several of you have been out there recruiting for, so thank you. Don't stop. Send anybody and everybody to teachhampton.com. Tell them to click on schedule an appointment, and we will get them hooked up. If they're not eligible to teach, we can get them on a path to teach. And we will work with them and can probably find some employment for them along the way. So, that is my report. Any questions?
Any questions, board members? Okay.
You just had a tough job. We appreciate it.
That's all right. It's all about the kids, and we're gonna make it work.
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Thank you.
Next, Smith?
Our next presentation, and that is just business and operations. CFO, Ms. Branch will provide the board with an update.
Good evening, Chair Mason, Vice Chair Cherry, school board members, Dr. Smith, and the Hampton community. Tonight's my pleasure to present the June two thousand twenty-two board report. The June report, it is a cumulative report. So this provides unaudited financial results for the entire fiscal year. So at the end of June, our revenues totaled two hundred and thirty-five million dollars. This is about four point zero seven percent higher when compared to fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. Much of that increase driven by additional state funding, and then also additional funds from our local governing body, which were budgeted and approved for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two. Expenditures and encumbrances totaled two hundred and forty-four million dollars. This is five point five percent higher when compared to fiscal year two thousand twenty-one. That increase is driven by salary increases, which were approved in the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two's budget, and then also encumbrances for capital projects for our classrooms and instructional technology. You will notice in the June report, it's a lot larger than other months. And that is because there is an additional schedule that is included that provides information on the carryforward funds that we will be requesting of city council for reappropriation. I will note that it's about one point nine percent of the available budget, and much of that driven by unspent payroll, as we know, as Ms. Ruth just talked about. You know, the teacher shortages, and it's trying to continue to hire to fill all of our positions. If approved by the city council, those funds would first go to our state programs, such as early reading intervention and the SOL algebra readiness program. Those funds have to be spent back into those programs, so we make sure to earmark that within the draft resolution that goes to city council. Second, the remaining funds will be utilized to offset any revenue shortfalls in two thousand twenty-three. And in the event those revenue shortfalls do not materialize, we will then look at how do we repurpose those funds for one-time expenditures within fiscal year two thousand twenty-three. And that's based on the revenue forecast as we continue on in this fiscal year. And as always, you do have a list of the transfers to and from technology for June two thousand twenty-two. And that does complete tonight's board report.
Thank you, Ms. Branch. Any questions? Mr. Samuels?
Just one question, Ms. Branch, just for clarity. On the expenditure, no, the transfer funds, classification sixty-eight, I see one for one thousand seven hundred dollars for IB subject fees for Hampton. That's the second to last page.
Which one was that again?
It's the
Exhibit B?
It's the Hampton City School classification transfer to and from, classification sixty-eight for the month of June twenty-two. It's, I believe, it says seventeen hundred dollars for IB subject fees. Is that for students? So we absorb the cost for the subject fees, or?
Yes. I'm sorry. I thought you said one million dollars. And that's why I was like, I don't see one million dollars.
Seventeen hundred dollars. So we absorb the cost for those subject fees and not put that on the parents?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
I understand it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
If I may, in reference to the IB subject fees, because I am an IB student, and so, you know, I have to talk about my academy, but I just want to shout out all of the seniors who graduated. I think we got thirty-two more students got the IB diploma last year than we had in these past couple years. And I don't know if you guys know, but it's very difficult to get that diploma. So I just want to shout them out.
Yes.
Good job.
All right. Any other comments from board members? Dr. Smith?
That concludes superintendent's staff report.
All right. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is deliberation. Six point zero one, revision of school board policy EB, school crisis, emergency management, and medical emergency response plan. Six point zero two, revision of school board policy EBB, threat assessment teams. Six point zero three, revision of school board policy EEAD, use of school buses. Six point zero four, revision of school board policy KBA, requests and responses to inquiries under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Six point zero five, deletion of school board policy KBA-F1, request for public record. Six point zero six, deletion of school board policy KBA-F2, record of inspection. Six point zero seven, revision of school board policy JO, student records. And the first three are with Dr. Bowlin. Are there any clarifying questions?
I don't have any.
From board members, Dr. Bowlin? All right. And then, thank you, Dr. Bowlin. And the next four are with Ms. Goral. Any questions from board members, clarifying questions? All right. Thank you. So moving along, item seven, items for action. Seven point zero one, revision of school board policy AC, non-discrimination. Seven point zero two, revision of school board policy BBFA slash GBA CB, conflicts of interest and disclosure of economic interests. Seven point zero three, revision of school board policy BDD, electronic participation in meetings from remote locations. Seven point zero four, revision of school board policy CLA, reporting acts of violence and substance abuse. Seven point zero five, revision of school board policy EFB, food services. Seven point zero six, deletion of school board policy JHCH, unpaid meal chargers. What's the will of the board?
Mr. Chair, move approval of action items seven point zero one through seven point zero six as a block.
It's been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Ms. Afonja, that we approve the items for action as a block. Is there any discussion? Ms. Bowles, please call for the vote.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afonja?
Aye.
Ms. Banks-Grey?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye. Motion carries. Next, item eight, deliberation first read. Eight point zero one, revision of school board policy DO dash R, grants protocol for Hampton City Schools. Eight point zero two, revision of school board policy JED, attendance policy. Eight point zero three, revision of school board policy exclusions and exemptions from compulsory school attendance. Eight point zero four, review of school board policy JGB, prohibition of bullying students. Eight point zero five, revision of school board policy JGC, student disciplinary alternative placement. Eight point zero six, revision of school board policy JHCB, student immunizations. Eight point zero seven, revision of school board policy JHCE, recommendation of medication by school personnel. Eight point zero eight, revision of school board policy JHH, suicide prevention and intervention. Eight point zero nine, revision of school board policy JB, all electronic devices. Eight point one zero, revision of school board policy KNAJ, relations with law enforcement authorities. And the first one, eight point zero one, is with Ms. Branch.
Good evening again. For policy DO dash R, grant protocol for Hampton City Schools, you will notice that the policy, as it was, is completely marked out in red. And that is because we are proposing to revamp the entire regulation, which that is included in blue in the policy. But we are requesting from the school board, if it be your pleasure, to move this regulation to be an internal document within Hampton City Schools. The way that we have revamped this is to really make it so that everyone in a school division that has a part in the grant process knows exactly what their role is. And as that role can sometimes change, we want it to be able to quickly make those adjustments and communicate those to people who are impacted within the organization. So this policy, if it be the school board's pleasure, we are requesting that it comes out of policies and becomes an internal process document for Hampton City Schools.
Yes.
Since it normally was an R, which is a regulation, under the VSBA rules, it doesn't necessarily, we have, as a practice, always had the board approve regulations, but you don't need to. So the suggestion that it's going to be no longer even a regulation or in our school board policies is in keeping with the fact that this is an R, and it's not like a regular school board policy that would need to be adopted or not adopted.
Okay.
Does that make it more understandable?
Okay. Any comments or questions from board members? Thank you. All right. And the next nine are with Ms. Hatchett.
Good evening, Dr. Mason, Vice Chair Cherry, members of the board, Dr. Smith, Pam Lees in Hampton. It's been a great meeting, and I'm happy to share some of these policy reviews with you. And I will just start with our attendance policy. That's policy JED. And there are some changes to that policy based on Virginia code, the VSBA updates, and it talks a little bit about excusing 4-H participation and tribal powwows for and tribal powwows for students. JEG is Exclusions and Exemptions from Compulsory School Attendance, and that is a five-year review with some very minor language changes. The next policy is Prohibitions of Bullying Students. Five-year review, and there's no changes recommended. Um, JGC is Student Disciplinary Alternative Placement. That's also a five-year review, no changes recommended. We have JHCB, Student Immunizations. Those changes are recommended by VSBA, very minor changes um to the language and a few substitutions there. We have Recommendation of Medication by School Personnel. Again, changes made to align with VSBA in May. This was not a five-year review, pretty recent policy, but they made just a small um update. Suicide Prevention and Intervention is a five-year review. Minor language change to better reflect the Code of Virginia requirements. The code hasn't changed, but we just changed our language a little bit. Um, All Electronic Devices Policy, this is a five-year review, um but there are also some recommended changes to the policy to better clarify cellphone use on school grounds before and after school, and to clarify cellphone use in the elementary schools. Uh, middle and high school was better delineated in the policy, so we just brought to light the use of elementary. Policy KNAJ reflection, um relations with law enforcement authorities, those changes are as a result of VSBA updates in May.
Questions from Board members, comments?
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Dr. Woodhouse.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. When we go to the um 8, 8.04 bullying, there is no change to that. Is there any additions to that? Um, because I'm always concerned about students that that are being bullied, and when they report it to um persons of authority, that if those persons do not act upon it, is there anything that we can be done to further the satisfaction of that student or that parent?
So the procedures are outlined in this policy, but I think our bullying protocol, which school administrators and staff usually bring life to the policy, and that happens at the building level, so that does speak a little bit clearer about some timelines and some things that administrators and counselors and school-level um folks really do to bring life to that.
And and we do uh re, you know, go over these constantly with those uh teachers and principals and other school administrators?
The protocol more, I would say more than this policy, but the protocol is driven by this policy, yes.
They they presented it at the first beginning of the year.
School administrators do that with their staff, yes. They share at the beginning as part of their back-to-school and
And the reason why I'm asking is because I get a lot of, a lot of reports and and calls to me concerning it. And so I tell them that there is a strong policy in place for bullying, and if they will contact those in authority, that they will get some satisfaction. Sometimes they do, and sometimes they do not.
Absolutely. Yes, it it's awesome if they can start at the school, but then if any of the rest of us can help support this policy, we're always happy to do that.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Any other clarifying questions from Board members? That's Tina locked down. See if that Ms. Banks Gray locked down. She's going to the bedroom. Okay. All right. All right. That's it?
They're getting better at it.
All right. Moving along, next item, item number nine. Hearing any delegations or presentation of any written communications or petitions. I have received two for public comment. Ms. Bowles, would you please read the protocol?
Citizens are invited to address the School Board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forums are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the School Board, please complete the forum and give it to the clerk by 6:45 PM on the day of the meeting. Each individual will have three minutes to speak. At the end of your time, you will hear a buzzer. All comments shall be directed to the School Board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the School Board with decorum on policy issues. Comments shall relate to agenda items or matters germane to the business or duties of the School Board. Speakers comment on individuals at their own risk of violating confidentiality laws and/or defaming the subjects of their comments. Neither the School Board, the Superintendent, nor the school administration will respond publicly to any comments by speakers about individuals. Presentation of Resolutions, Declarations, Proclamations, Manifestos, Awards, or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the School Board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the School Board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the Board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the Superintendent for research and response. The Superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. Read that lesson. Um, the School Board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
Thank you. I'd like to remind everyone that we, as a Board, do not respond to um any of the public comments from the day. However, the Division Leadership Team often will meet with citizens when they have a concern after they speak there just to try to bring resolution. And so we moved uh the public comment period closer to information and after all of our reports, because oftentimes some of our Division Leadership uh team members are engaged and participating in reports and can't get to citizens sometimes when they have those questions. And so we want, wanted to try to bring some continuity uh to the public comment period. So that's why we moved um our public comment period closer and it to the end, should I say, after our reports um at our August meeting, uh last month, beginning last month. So um just want to bring some clarity to um to that piece. So we have two, and first is Mr. David Dietrich.
Good evening, Chairman Mason, Superintendent Smith, members of the School Board. My name is David Dietrich, 139 Wilderness Road. First of all, I'd like to say uh how wonderful it is to see that none of you have a mask on tonight as the face of the Hampton School System. You're finally following the science, and that's good to see. There were a lot of presentations today about the performance of the school system uh using standardized test results and comparisons to other districts, and and that is a good sign. Um, but there's still the matter of what's the actual value to the students themselves, and and I think more emphasis needs to be put on that. And I'm surprised, uh continue to be surprised and disappointed by the uh poor parental involvement at meetings like this. I think there should be more parents uh speaking out to you uh in in a public way and voicing their concerns. There's a lot going on around the country, and uh there's a lot of answer or questions to be answered about uh where your focus is uh in this school district. The um, obviously you talked about the test scores, uh SOL scores, and they've dropped really across the board. Uh, you're doing a little better than other districts, um but also the NAEP uh tests nationwide have dropped dramatically in math and sci- and uh uh reading. How are you planning to address these? How are you planning to turn that uh that decline around? What what exactly are you going to do about that? I also like to know how much emphasis you're putting on non-academic issues, uh such as diversity, equity, and inclusion. Uh, those uh in many cases distract from the real education. How much time do you spend on critical race theory and critical gender theory? Uh, there should be more on critical thinking uh done by the students to improve their performance. So I'd like to uh go along with Superintendent Smith's uh uh statement about teaching and learning. Uh, that's where uh the focus should be, and that's to make the students themselves more competitive in our society and and measuring how they perform. How many are going on to college, uh and how many are getting jobs? These are measures that you could actually come up with to show that the Hampton School System is performing uh in a, in a recognizable way. So I'd like to just finally challenge you to make a public uh declaration uh at one of your upcoming meetings, and that's to renounce critical race and gender theory publicly and make it clear that these notions have no place in Hampton Schools, and proclaim math and reading as your critical education goals and make everything else secondary. Uh, this is important, and uh I thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Brenda Marks.
Dr. Mason, Ms. Cherry, Board members, and Dr. Smith. I'm here again. I want to refer you to Code of Virginia 22 dot 1 dash 79A, which states in part, "A Board shall, one, see that the school laws are properly enforced; two, secure by visitation or otherwise as full on information as possible about the conduct of the public school division, and with emphasis added, take care that they are conducted according to law and with the utmost efficiency." In March of this year, I advised this Board that my daughter had been emotionally abused by one of her general education teachers. A short time later, I provided supporting documentation from her professional counselor. A requirement from social service was exhausting the chain of command with the division. After a length of time, Dr. Smith scheduled a Zoom meeting, which did not occur due to Cox deciding to replace the transformer on my street that day. Documentation in hand. In the presence of some of you at a later School Board meeting, Dr. Smith offered to have that meeting rescheduled by his secretary, only to have Ms. Reeves two days later send me an email, but my communication was limited to the building principal and the Director of Special Education. Fast forward to tonight, and I can tell you that I am aware that Hampton City Schools has passed the trash, and that teacher no longer works for the division. Just because you are done with her does not mean I am, and your failure to ensure that Dr. Smith reschedules that meeting is creating a barrier that prohibits the exercise of my daughter's due process rights. Emotional abuse of a child is illegal, and you're knowingly allowing this barrier to remain is malfeasance of your office. I promise you, if I cannot hold that teacher accountable, I will hold you accountable. The clock is ticking. My legal rights run out in, on March 15th of next year. But I do want to take, I got 47 seconds, and I want to throw this out to Dr. Smith and Ms. Afonja. When you ask why our special ed students did so well, I can tell you with all personal knowledge, these children desire to succeed and to shine. Given the proper environment, the proper tools, and the proper support, they will outdo your general ed students any day of the week. Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to item number 10, information. Next meeting, a work session will be held at 6:30 PM on September 21st at the Rupert Sargent Building, and the next regular meeting will be held at 6:30 PM on October 5th, right here at Jones Magnet Middle School. All right. So other information, uh Dr. Smith?
Uh, thank you, Dr. Mason. And just an observation, outstanding opening to school uh in terms of this school year, so kudos to all of the members of of the team uh for uh their hard work as it relates to the opening of schools. So again, thank you for that, and certainly to our students and and families. Uh, thank you for your continued support and um uh involvement and engagement in terms of Hampton City Schools. I would conclude my remarks with um uh really just uh sharing that we'll follow up um with specific comments as it relates to critical race theory in particular, um uh communication that we have forwarded, and I'll be more than happy to share that critical race theory is not being taught in Hampton City Schools, and it is not part of our curriculum. Uh, and we've communicated that to individuals who have uh raised that question. I'll be more than happy to continue to communicate the same uh in this regard.
Many, many times.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Board members? I would like to see if Ms. Cherry wanted to mention her, the tissues for teachers.
Oh, okay. I was, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, we're having the Second Annual Tissue for Teachers Event at, on this Saturday at Kroger, the Hampton Kroger, from 10 to 2 PM. We started this um a couple of years back, and we did it because we were hearing teachers say, "We're running out of tissues and disinfectant and wipes." So I got with veteran teacher Michelle Johnson, and we put together a really nice event where Kroger stepped up to the plate. People bought in ti- um bought tissues and disinfectant and wipes, and they put them in the cart, and we had so much stuff that the um people from Marty Woods Print Shop Office had to come and pick them up um and distribute them, where Ann Bain was in charge of making sure that our teachers got them. But when we did it, 10 days later, they shut the schools down for COVID. So now that we're back in motion, we won't be going toward the winter again. We're going to do this um on Saturday, and we've gotten so much impetus and support for our teachers who many, many times come out of pocket for this. And I can tell you, it was so overwhelming last time, and I expect it to be the same, because at the end of the day, every paper towel, every tissue box, every can of disinfectant and wipes that were put at the end of the Kroger counters for people to come in and buy, Kroger donated every one of them to Hampton City Schools. So hopefully you can come out to Kroger 10 to 2 on Saturday, go inside the store, pick up some things that are going to be at the end of end of the counter, and drop them off for our teachers.
All right. Thank you. I'd also like to mention, we will be having our Board Retreat on September, September the 12th from 10 to 2 as well. Um, and also want to send a special thank you to Ms. Ann Bain for coordinating our community partnership gathering we had tonight with the city as well as Hampton University, and welcoming the new president, President Darrell Williams, who we heard from earlier. So thank you very much for all of your support, Ms. Bain, in putting that together, and she is our Director of Community and and Legislative Relations. Thank you.
It was excellent.
You did. I did. Okay, good. I got the title right. That's good. Thank you so much. Excellent job. Um, and then also, I just want to take a moment to just acknowledge and say happy birthday to Ms. Banks Gray. She's spending her birthday with us tonight, so happy birthday, Ms. Banks Gray. All right. Now, Student Rep, have anything she wants to add tonight? You ready to go, huh? She says she's been here long enough.
Well, you know, she did a great job in what she did say.
Exactly, exactly. So with no further business to be had tonight, I declare this meeting adjourned.